No, no, show some air right there. Yeah, no, hundred percent. Well, no, and Bucky, I'm telling you that there has been an impingement on my rights as a sitting commissioner that you've allowed to happen, that you've done nothing about. As far as constitutional rights, as far as my ability to say something freely, not to be answered by official city business, with you having nothing to say in response to it. And now you say, oh, yeah, well, here, all of a sudden, I care about, I care about screens.
Yeah, 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 that's right.
Eh, yeah, education, nothing. I think that I'm being sued as is the city, and you're saying nothing about it publicly. And that's a shame, and you should be ashamed of that.
We're live right now.
You're saying nothing about the city being sued.
We're live right now.
All right, well, you're, you're sitting there saying nothing in response to the city being sued for me saying something very responsible, and which you're well aware of, documentation, of independent investigation. You're saying nothing in response to that. So you are letting me sit there on my own while you do nothing about it. It's a shame, it's an absolute shame, and you should be embarrassed. Well, you should be, I think you're not, I think you're not. Okay, well, you're not, or you shouldn't. You should, you absolutely should, I think. I think that you have backed down. You said, I don't back down, you most certainly have. That, well, it looks like, not apparently. Do you think the lawsuit is justified in that the taxpayers should pay for it? You haven't said a damn thing about it, have you, Buck? No, no, you have not, you've said nothing at the meeting, you've said nothing at the meeting. You'll tell me, oh, I don't like this, but then once the meeting serves.
I mean, right there.
But I mean, I'm with you, I'm with you.
On the scoop.
Let's address this as a shame.
I'm trying to keep everything on there. I'll post it, I'll post it to the audit page as well. The audit page as well. Add it on my YouTube page, too. I'll share the link.
Next one, let's run the tape, my friend.
It'll be on the scoop, too.
Thanks, my breasts.
I just can't try throat. Most of my sugar is low, so I answer shaky. Yes, sir. Most of it, I just started like kind of a little bit into it. Hi Denise. I think Bucky went to get some chairs.
Yeah, now you can have mine.
I don't really need it, I have it on mine. Roughly five minutes, guys. Dropping off the water bill. Dropping off his water bill. Someone's got a molar. I just dropped here, I live two and a half blocks from here. Trying to get in.
I've tried several times, any of them.
I lost seventy fucking pounds. How long? November.
We're waiting, we're back on stage, as far as like if they'll, if they'll take the weight. All right, six inches. People, I, we want to do maintenance, work construction, one or the other.
Move to Crest Hills, and then.
Hundred percent. Thank you. And thank you for major.
So I had my house.
You keep coming. Just, it's all still working.
Yeah.
If you can, I will.
Then you end up here. Then you end up here.
I love small town living. I just don't like the corruption.
A lot of us have stuff to do.
I've been here forty-three years. You know, it's funny, I was just watching a movie, Stand By Me, last night, and you know, you're talking about the little town in Fort Worth. I was like, I was like, man, I could just imagine the kids that grew up in this area, that like, you know, some of the other guys around here.
If I can say. I know it's a first amendment, but I don't know that they have to apply it to our sales.
Which I know, I know where, I know old ones. My house is a hundred and thirty years old, a hundred and thirty-five years.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, like all that stuff.
We'll find out. We'll find out. We'll find out if I can say that or not.
Even half the houses up like.
Joe, good evening. Thanks for coming. Denise, thanks for coming.
I'm ready.
Outstanding. You are here as my guest.
Where's the podium?
You're very welcome. Oh, I don't know, actually. I didn't burn my palate.
It went down, it went down to the museum for the event.
All right, testimony of the First Amendment.
We only have one. Can I stand over there when I talk to my buckshot camera? I didn't like how bad I looked in the last video. You don't look bad, you're, I'm trying, y'all.
Meeting in order, clerk, read the roll.
Mayor Holback.
Here.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Here.
Small, you're shy.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here. All rise for.
The Republicans to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Approval of the minutes.
Well, by Commissioner Kaminsky, that the minutes in my conference meeting will change, please, twenty twenty-five be approved, and please, I file, and please, I submit the reading of the minutes.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have a statement to make, and this has been clear with my attorney. I want to explain my concern about the minutes being read and the timing of the minutes as compared to the mayor's recap. Whether it is called this councilman or the city E-News, it should be noted that it is sent through city resources and negatively, well, it is. Sorry about that. And negatively addresses me both by name and by implication. And you're aware of that. And I can't answer even though I'm in city government, I'm a licensed official in city government. For example, on June twentieth, the mayor mentions the city official behind all the FOIA requests. By implication, that's me. I'm responsible for three specific and immediately applicable FOIA requests of the current situation. My concerns about me getting multiple bids and overspending are bona fide, and I have exactly one person to speak on my behalf, a personal attorney that I have had to hire to protect my constitutional rights due to press political opinions. As we will discuss later, legal expenses for FOIA responses come about when it is decided not to fulfill certain requests or parts of requests. The FOIA expenses have been blamed on me for some time now, really due to a document that I did not release. I requested an investigation into the release of that document, that investigation was not provided. As far as redactions, I believe that an attorney would be entirely beneficial to draft a policy for the officer to file, a FOIA officer to file. That policy should be clear and straightforward, such an additional hourly cost should not be incurred. We're waiting almost two weeks to get the minutes of a meeting while the mayor uses city resources to give his biased recap of the meeting with no vote or opportunity to review, and do so under the color of state. A record of meeting is right to be expected after said meeting, but particularly when official recaps color those same events. As such, I am asked to vote not just on the minutes, but also on the waving of the minutes, and as to what the official representation of the last meeting was, and I'm voting no for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, clerk, read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small, I'm shy.
No.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Holback.
Aye. Okay, Denise.
No podium. I'm gonna go on, can I use this spot? So I ask to be put on the agenda to discuss a couple of different things. One of them is city ordinance, and potentially needing to adopt one for allowing donations at the Freedom Mall. Um, the Memorial Mall, sorry. Um, I've been doing some research, and I did get the purchase agreement, which, and the assignment and assumption page, from what I'm understanding, it basically states that, there is a lease, that that lease is an agreement with the Middle East Tribute Board, Tribute Board, and that the city is now party to ensuring that that lease is handled, like, the city is now, because we took over that building, the lease, or, and the Middle East Tribute Board is a leasing. So if I'm understanding that correctly. If this, if the Freedom Run Board is the leasing, that would, in my opinion, or really, I think there may be law to back this up, but I haven't had time to look into it, mean that they're allowed to have those boxes on that property, because they're releasing that land. It would be like telling me that I can't have one on my property. It's also covered under the First Amendment of the Constitution, under freedom of speech, that they are able to do that. It can also be, like, you guys can set, like, limits on those things with ordinances, however, it is covered under the freedom of speech in the First Amendment. So with that said, I don't think they need an ordinance for that particular location to have donation boxes. I do know that the lease was not signed by ILFMR, however, because it is mentioned in the purchase agreement, which dates post that lease agreement, and there's acknowledgement of it in that purchase agreement, it means that it was a well-known lease, that it's being known, like, everybody that's signed any of this is saying that, yes, we see that that is a lease, and we understand the terms of it. So, that alone tells me that, whether it was signed or not, tells me that there's understanding that that lease is there, and what the terms of that lease are. So I would like donation boxes to be put back at that wall, number one. Number two, if there is an ordinance required to have donations or solicitation on city or public property, and/or need to obtain, like, something from the police department, I believe is the ones that do that, stating that you can solicit. If it's a donation or solicitation, they're a little bit different, right, they're, they kind of overlap, but they're a little bit different. A donation goes to a charitable organization, a five oh one C three typically. A solicitation is trying to sell something, sometimes not so much for a fundraiser, sometimes for a fundraiser, so they kind of overlap a little bit. But if there needs to be an ordinance in place for solicitation, obviously, that's, we already have something that is ongoing with the police department. I don't know if that's listed in the city ordinances, because I did not see it anywhere when I was looking. So therefore, if it's not a city ordinance, it shouldn't be required. Also, if it's donations, that's a little bit different and covered under the First Amendment of freedom of speech. So we kind of get into First Amendment rights with that one. And that can kind of be a problem. So, if y'all want to adopt an ordinance for that, I would highly recommend, number one, doing that, even if people have to, like, you know, request it, like, sign something saying, like, I can do donations for this amount of time at this place, or whatever it may be.
Okay, Denise, your five minutes is up, so let's wrap it up.
I'm on the agenda, I don't have five minutes.
Well, she's on the agenda regarding competitive bidding and advertising.
As well as, read the next one.
And ordinance regarding donation boxes.
I, I, I would like to professionally request that she be allowed to continue.
She's on the agenda to discuss those items, so if she wants to be able to continue, that this just isn't a public comment, because it's a specific agenda item, the council can't allow it to go on a little bit longer than it is set time.
I would like to request that accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
So I guess what I'm getting at is if we need an ordinance, number one, it needs to be put in place, it needs to be on the site, where all of the ordinances are listed. If, if you're requiring people to get something for solicitation, then that needs to be listed in the ordinance, as it's currently not that I saw. It may be, and I may have missed it, but it's not where I saw. If we are doing donations, we need to be very careful, because, again, that can impede somebody's First Amendment rights. And I don't believe that we would, would have to require anything to do that, or an ordinance to do it, because it is covered under the First Amendment. The other issue is competitive bidding. So, the, the thing, the thing that I wanted to discuss with that was, I don't know that I've seen anywhere where we're getting at least three bids or publicizing those when we're looking for companies to do work. It does state in the ordinances that it is required to be put up twice, to different places, to different times, and then all of the people that bid come into the city council, and et cetera, et cetera, like, it's all laid out in the city ordinance.
Thirty-two sixteen.
I don't believe that I have seen those posted anywhere online, or in the paper, or anything of the sort. And it does appear to me, I could be very wrong here, but when I'm looking through financials, I keep seeing the dot-winger name under all of these things that are getting paid for. So I don't know really what's going on with bids there, or if they just keep winning the bids, because I haven't seen bids be put up. Which I would worry is a legal issue for anybody that wants to come into the council legally, because they're not being allowed to bid. The other part of that is, I'm requesting that you all consider adopting another portion of that ordinance, or an addendum or amendment, amendment to that ordinance, that would require any change order costing over twenty thousand dollars more than the initial agreeable amount for any project has to be bitted upon. We have a hundred and eight thousand dollar bathroom coming up, and it's a prefabricated bathroom that probably costs forty K, maybe, maybe ten to make.
Over to my house.
But, a hundred and eight thousand dollar bathroom, because we don't require that.
If I can say.
And I would, I would like to see that maybe there'd be an amendment or addendum adopted that if it's over twenty thousand, I think twenty thousand's a decent allowable amount when the city's talking about so much money, to require bids if it's gonna go over that amount. And those are the two ordinances that I had asked to speak on.
Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council?
Oh, you know that, buddy. You like these, don't you? Got my friend, I was on. And I did have a very nice flight from Arizona, it was very unconventional. I don't come out to Illinois for any reason, except for the mayor, because the mayor apparently wanted me to come here today. Because I went to Arizona back in March, moved out, forced a sale, that we found that X side has been getting paid for quite a long time, since twenty twenty-three, since you've been getting paid to help take our houses, huh? Appreciate the, these icons down there, but.
Denise.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm a thing.
And I'm gonna maintain.
And I'm gonna reclaim my time. Thank you.
Time, if she had, this is like three hours, I'm overlooked.
Okay, I'm point of order, I believe he's in order, I believe he's not being disrespectful or out of order at this moment. Please continue, sir.
I'm not.
And I would like those five minutes to reflect that. Please continue, Mr. Dan Janovich.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Now, came out here, I actually went, and I even talked to my last city council media, I came after I sold my house, or contract assigned my house. I came in here and I talked to Smalls and Kaminsky. And at the end, they kind of said, we had a nice conversation, towards what we talked, it was very nice, it was nothing mean. But they had asked me at the end, where are you going from here? Where do I go? I said, well, I'm just gonna go to Arizona, probably just fade away from all this bullshit and intimidation that I've had to deal with for seven, eight months at that time, I was done, I wanna go. I'm Arizona, I'm gonna go. Okay? I sat back for almost two months, nobody seen me post on Facebook, maybe a little comment here, a little com- Something, fading away is what I told them, and they'll tell you, I told them I was gonna fade away. Cause I'm in Arizona, freaking out, I'm in Iowa, fifteen, sixteen, I'm always way.
At point of order, I don't believe that he's being the least bit rude or out of, out of.
I can say fuck shit if I.
No, with all due respect.
Mr. Dan Janovich.
Okay, I, I were. I were afraid before that word, but I don't know what I said wrong.
Correct, so Mr. Dan Janovich, if you could just refrain from using any propaganda.
I, I.
And I'm not.
What did I do wrong before that, though, that's what I was trying to say.
That's fine, so go ahead and proceed.
Appreciate your help, reclaim my time. Again, so, and I didn't, and then I had some random person that I don't even know if we were in time, it wasn't anybody that I even talked to, I even talked to a few people, randomly sent me a link to a video of that guy. And he was holding a piece of paper saying this and that, talking about me, I mean, it's like Beetlejuice, you know, you say three times, I gotta go. You know, so he, all the way from Arizona, he wanted to talk me up. Okay, so now he wants to try to intimidate me, badmouth me, do all this stuff, okay? So, I have another person here, asked me a question, hey, I can't find the meeting for nine, uh, nine four, twenty twenty-four. I says, well, specifically, I told that person, just ask the city for it, they'll give it to you. Cause I don't even wanna deal with the city, I know, I'm in Arizona. Okay, don't wanna deal, just go with it. They do, then the person tells me a couple days later, and they're like, they say they ain't got no video. I said, that's bullshit, I got the link right here. I got the link right here, I got it right in here. And actually, I got the link itself via a FOIA last year from Caitlin, and thank you for the email, it's a good afternoon, so I appreciate that. So, I did create a fake email account and requested the same information the person just did, and I was told again, those do not exist, they're not there, we do not have it. And at that point, I fired off a letter and said, hey, to the city, what's up? Again, I filed it in my own name, Leslie Hart, F O O, Officer, reports back, no records exist. What do you mean? I go ahead and send them back the link to it, to the video, okay? Then again, two days later, I request the same information again. You would think, since I gave them the video that was on the YouTube page, you would think that they would have it. But guess what? No. No, we don't have that record, it does not exist. Even the marketing director, Amanda Hart, says she don't have it, which I believe she didn't have it, because they were recorded off the mayor's phone. So, but, lo and behold, as soon as I made that evidence to them again, that, hey, look, you can, you can see this video with this link that was provided by the city lawyers, that takes you to the city YouTube page, but you can't view that video without that specific link, it's private. And actually, even right now, today, after they did that, they took everything down on YouTube. There was no city YouTube videos at all, you click there, not there, nothing, everything. Today now, I get an email, I'll post it later for y'all, let's see, what's, they did it perfectly. We'll get some more information on that later, though. But now, apparently, their IT person, when they, they, they took the YouTube count down, and when they turned it back on, they found several videos that were sent to an unpublished part of the page. Now, here's the thing, there's three videos missing on that whole entire page since they've been recording, okay? Back in May, when Mark Rice was kicked out of the state, standing right here, then again, I'm.
I, I would like to yield my time, this goddamn Janovich has a resident of my sales, please.
Yeah, do you have your clock, can I see it?
Uh, five minutes, please, I'd like to yield my time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, and then they go ahead, and when the page is back, I'll, I'll, the video is, the missing videos was the Mark Rice video when he got kicked out. Okay?
Sir, I'd like to give my time, please continue, Scott.
Thank you. Then the next one was when I exposed the lawsuit that she filed against the mayor and the city for harassment. Okay, and they paid out. I suppose that video went to unpublished. He's the one who posted, I don't know if, he's only done that to three videos, and then the video after that is when I got up to speak, the first words out of his mouth is, you're not allowed, I'm not going to allow you to speak if you're gonna talk about confidential city personnel, but guess what? But guess what? The lawsuit's already been released, it's not confidential. Just cause somebody says something's confidential, doesn't make it legally confidential, I can say anything that's confidential. So anyways, so he restricted my rights then. The last video that was ever posted before they took the YouTube page down was on the twenty-first of November. That's when I sat there, that's when all the council members here, I came in, sat down where that camera used to be, where he used to record. He gave, came up, grabbed Chief Gordon right here, went over to me and told me, I'm shut down, I will not be allowed to speak or you're going to get arrested. I asked to talk to Chief Gordon outside, me and him talked, there was a female officer that day that was getting, uh, coming into the, getting, uh, sworn in or whatnot. He says, please don't do it, I said, well, I'll do it under duress of arrest, so I didn't speak. So I was restricted, I wasn't even allowed, he don't know what I was talking about. That is illegal and bull crap for anybody to pull at anybody. And then those three videos, it's just random that those three videos just happened to not be published. And then when it's made known that I do have them, they take the whole entire YouTube ta- YouTube page down? Now today, the YouTube page is actually backed up, but there's not one video posted. You go there right now to the city YouTube page, not one video is posted, but yet I have two links provided by the city attorney this morning, or this afternoon, probably a half hour ago, actually, that has a link to. So I have the video links, but nobody here can see those videos without the links that I got. But they said didn't exist just last week, just last week, multiple people, even after I told them they existed, they still denied it. Still deny it, they are lying on FOIAs like there's nobody's business. Then I asked, there's a say, a, a, I'm gonna give this to you guys, cause this here, hold on, there's a, I'm gonna read off nine questions. I gave the city a cease and desist order, okay? The city had, uh, I got a lot of people.
I, 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 two minutes, sir. Two minutes of my time, but I'd be able to two of them.
Right, here's a list, okay, here's a list, yeah, he wants these questions out, he doesn't want these questions to be served. Here's a question now, this is from Keith, the other one of the city attorneys, okay? According to when I got my cease and desist letter and handed out to everybody, this is a letter that the Caitlin Law Firm asked in response to my cease and desist, here are the questions. Number one, does the city have an official website where videos of each council session, sessions are posted? If so, who maintains and controls the website or YouTube channel? Number three, where are the minutes of council session, sessions posted online and who does that? Number four, does the city maintain multiple sites, Facebook, YouTube? Number five, were the meetings of August twenty-fourth and September fourth publicly posted? If not, why? So they were back in November, they were aware they weren't being posted, they knew it. Okay, are, number six, are there any formal rules or policies related to the U of the city's website, Facebook page? Number seven, did the mayor decline to permit Mr. Demianos to speak at the September fourth council meeting? Number eight, where does the mayor live stream? Does he do it personally or for his official capacity as mayor? Number nine, are city funds expended on websites, YouTube's account? So they have been well aware and he has been fighting this tooth and nail. And then he goes ahead and tries to blame me for all these FOIA costs when all you have to do for an FOIA response is this, you go to your computer and say, he wants an email from Xide, there it is. It doesn't take.
One minute, please, sir.
It doesn't take anything, that's unconstitutional law, so arrest me, so arrest me. It's been ruled unconstitutional a million times. I'll show you the case law, arrest me, I'll see, I can do it.
Never, never a minute yet.
So either way.
Thank you, Frank.
So they have been, and they continually, continually lie on these FOIAs. I even asked for, the, the people who, and this eight questions were sent to two other people. This was sent to Amanda Hart, our marketing and the mayor. I wanna know the answers to these questions and I FOIA'd them and I says, you know what? I'll FOIA Amanda's emails to find out, okay? So I started and you know what the response to that was? She has no records of emails for that. What do you mean she has no, she, she didn't send any city employee an email for a period of a month, is what you're telling me? Bull crap, they're lying on everything. I will post all of this later on tonight for everybody who, oh, and if. And if nobody else notices, I'm not on the Marcel Towne forum page and I'll also post you the screenshot of that because he last week was talking to the admin of that page, John Hamilton, who started the page and was talking about, it's not about me, it's about the town, he needs to go.
I do have time.
Okay, you have time, but you're gonna have to arrest me because I know the, I know the law and that, so you got to carry me on out. But anyways, I'm gonna continue talking. So they, he's just been bull crapping us day in and day out. He's been lying and then also I wanted to come here, if anybody thinks I came here to Illinois just to say this, I mean, don't get me wrong, Constellation paid me pretty good, but I'm not gonna spend five hundred dollars airplane ticket out here just to hoop and holler like this, although it is needed to be done, but I do.
Right.
I, I know it is enough because you know exactly what I'm about to say, so you just sit there and you just take, just sit there and take it.
Actually, but Mr. Dan Janovich did the mayor ban you from a private.
Yes, he banned me because John Hamilton wouldn't do it and I have all the text messages and everything to prove that he did it personally. And you know, ask him, know how many people he's banned to five years he's been admin on the page? None, except for the air dryer vent people, we all go, I'm the only person, only person.
So, 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 so once again, in, in interest of transparency, did he, did the mayor of Marcell's operating in his official capacity?
Yes, he did.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, he did, and on his page, hold on, and on his page. He has a mayor's page that says, mayor's of Marcell's, he says it's not his personal page, but yet it gives the address of two oh nine Lincoln. It gives the, hold on, it gives his phone number of his office, it gives the mayor's email address, it's everything on it. It's not a, a, a personal page, it's a public page and he's blocked me from that. And then he reposts on the city page, which involves, I can't see it and everybody needs to, you can't be blocking people. He don't realize that at all, he does not. And he's stepping on people's toes and now he's scared. He's scared now because he knows exactly what I'm about to tell everybody, that Leslie Hart, Mayor Hollibek, and the city of Marcell's, you know damn well, we are suing you and we have a lawyer and we're coming after you and it's a personal thing. And thank you, I'm loving it. And Leslie Hart is the one who gave me that damn HR report after I came to complain to the city, to the mayor about him and his goddamn fucking street of law. Sorry about that, sorry about that. I'm my time, so.
I can think of the subpoena records, I think that's a subpoena.
Yeah, I, there's not a problem, no, well, they can do it all, it's good, it's good. This isn't, this isn't a debate here, I'm talking. It's not getting out of hand.
Mr. Dan Janovich.
Are you, am I leaving or arrest or not? I'm not, I'm not done.
I'm asking you.
I'm not, if you wanna arrest me, you can arrest me. Okay, and I'm not done talking, I'm not done talking. I will, I will. I will.
I get it, but, but two wrongs.
I will, number two, number three, number three, I wanna know why the two people, the two people who have control of YouTube is the. Arrest me, arrest me. Under duress, I'm waving, under duress. You're going down, buddy. Going down, yeah, laugh, where's your lawyer at today? Oh, I'm sorry, he's at the bar.
That's fine.
Anybody else?
Sorry, that's fine, sorry, so I, I actually like to hand one dress out to every one of you. This is a FOIA response I received, um, this past Thursday, to which I responded. That Leslie is a liar.
Point, point of order, listeners, it's a comment.
This is the email where I specifically requested.
Please, Melissa.
My name is.
Please, Melissa, I would like to hear from you.
Public comment, let her talk.
So I sent an email, a FOIA request, asking for videos of city council meetings on August twenty-first, September and September fourth, twenty twenty-four. I, I submitted the link that had previously been active, this link no longer was active. Her response, no records exist.
This is the.
I want you to click this link that I sent and tell me what you see.
Sure, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, no, very much.
If you can click that link and tell me what you see.
Uh, that is a record from the meeting.
Yes, September fourth, twenty twenty-four. The record says it's now live. Well, did you?
Why would I hold that back?
Uh, please continue.
Did you not email this link to Scott? To Scott, why didn't we get to speak?
You are speaking.
All right, folks, you lied on this, on this FOIA.
Ma'am, what is your question to me? You've asked a question of corporation counsel.
Did you send that, the link for the September fourth, twenty twenty-four video to Scott?
For the September fourth or September twenty-fourth meeting?
So, I believe it was September fourth, hold on, September fourth.
I sent Mr. Dan Janovich an email response this afternoon in reference to both the September meeting and the August meeting. Correct, and I believe you're indicating to the council tonight and the members of the public that you received that email as well. He forwarded that communication from our office in reference to providing the two links for these two videos that he requested. And there was an explanation.
Watching the video when it went down, when it was pulled from the city site, and that is when I sent in the FOIA.
Was the September fourth video in possession of the city of Marcell?
This is the question I answered.
Uh, no, that, that is a very, that is a very pertinent point.
Let corporation counsel finish because I did provide a legal answer to this question today. Uh, and it can, uh, I don't have the exact email in front of me, I can pull it up on my computer. But essentially what happened for the general public who's present here tonight, those of you who are watching on the video and for you ma'and that are here today, there was a Freedom of Information Act request by Mr. Dan Janovich some time ago, I don't remember the exact date. He requested, uh, all of the videos. The information was supplied that the clerk had at the time of the Freedom of Information Act request. She provided what was available to her, she is not an IT specialist, her job and responsibilities are not to be able to go into the cloud or go into any software program to be able to provide that. She provided what she had available to her, uh, through the Freedom of Information Act request to Mr. Dan Janovich.
And to your knowledge, did that include the September fourth, two thousand twenty-four video?
It did not include those.
Tell me why none of those videos are live on the website now, you can only access this video.
Well, ma'am, let me finish answering the question before you ask an additional question, since this is the question that you've asked corporation counsel for. So she provided those information, those videos that were available. Mr. Dan Janovich sent another request, which he alluded to in his presentation. I did not know that he was submitting anonymous requests through a different email that was not his email, which he's referencing. But there was additional emails by Mr. Dan Janovich in reference to those two particular videos. So, uh, in, in reference to not his Freedom of Information Act, but on another matter, the IT person, the marketing person that some of you refer to her, Amanda Hart, who handles the IT responding, was, was doing something, and I'm not an IT expert, so I don't know exactly what she's. Okay, well, then you may be able to explain it better than me, but.
There would be a record of who unpublished those and I will be FOIAing that record. And I will expect.
And I do not know the answer to that question. I don't know who unpublished it, I was told that, uh, there was direction from the city, so I don't have the answer to that as we sit here tonight.
Direction from the city to unpublish it?
To the, uh, IT department. I don't know what that direction was, whether to unpublish it or not unpublish it, I, I don't even know what unpublished means.
Who runs the IT department?
Amanda Hart handles the IT. So she, uh, made an adjustment or there was something that she looked at it and it was, it came to her attention that those were marked, not just those two videos, there were a handful of videos that she reported were not published. And that it came to her attention that they were not published, it was brought to our attention. And because we knew that there were certain Freedom of Information Act requests that were requesting those two particular videos, we directed her to provide us with those links so we could share those links per the Freedom of Information Act request.
They added all I got, just the one email, not even a response.
But what's a corporate, corporation counsel not to the public as per FOIA request?
I was, if you ma'am supplied or, or have a Freedom of Information Act from some time ago that referenced.
From June twenty-sixth of this year, from literally Thursday.
All right.
And it was an almost immediate response of no record exists and we knew it existed.
Leslie, I don't have that February twenty-sixth.
Megan's got it.
Megan's got it.
Right, because we had been asked four times for the identical record of which did not exist at the time, as I was told by Amanda Hart.
Right, we were not aware of that.
I am not, so that is how I responded and Megan Cameron has a response for her.
But did, did, did the city of Marcell's in point of fact have that video?
I did not have that video.
Did the city of Marcell's in point of fact have that video?
Well, this is, that's a lie.
Let me answer the question I'm asking corporation counsel. On the YouTube link now, that is a lie.
Any document that is created as part of a city, uh, program or related to the city is subject to a Freedom of Information Act request.
Very well.
This video existed, Mr. Shai, to your point.
And we had it.
We didn't know they had it. The clerk did not know we had it, but was it a city video at the time that it was produced and retained? I believe the legal answer to that is yes, it was a city document.
Thank you.
It is not the, the Freedom of Information Act officer's responsibility to understand all the technology. She was notified that they, that there was no video. So that was the reason that she made her response the way that she did. When it came to light that the video existed, the information was, and, and I'm not even sure that the city was required, but I believe that the appropriate thing in, in, to use your word transparency, the appropriate thing to do was to provide those videos because they had been requested, it came to our attention that they now existed and that they could be unpublished and recovered.
But, yeah, but, but just now she asked if those existed and what was the answer?
The answer is yes.
Okay, and so are, have they been provided?
Was not aware of them.
Have they been provided pursuant to FOIA?
To Mr. Dan Janovich.
Thank you.
If she has submitted a Freedom of Information, I don't know if you're a recurrent quester and that at the time.
Sitting there, right there looking at my request and the rest of my requests that you'd like to read it will cover where those videos went to, who deleted them, who unpublished them.
Well, that is a different question. If you had requested.
Single request.
Yeah, if you have requested those videos, they now exist and they will be supplied to you.
I'll look forward to that email and the rest of my FOIA.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, it sounds to me like they are very sealed, but we will formally respond. Mr. Dan Janovich, I had to not send them to you when he sent you the email.
He showed me on his phone when he got the email and was driving in here.
Okay, you'd said you'd seen.
The rest of my FOIA, that should cover who unpublished those videos and who was responsible for hiding them and making the city clerk unaware of their existence.
Well, we will let you respond accordingly.
Yeah, I'm gonna use my.
I didn't.
Okay, um, I got, I wanted to ask, um, if I can propose the city to, um, I was looking through the, um, wall memorial funding um, that I got and it looks like it was over twenty-two thousand dollars in that account. Um, and I was gonna propose that, I know that we have to pay officers and get them overtime and everything for the Freedom Run um, and be present for that. And I was gonna propose, because it's dealing directly with the Freedom Run, if we could pay the officers out of that fund instead of out of city fund. Um, so that's something that I wanted to bring up, um, to think about because we wouldn't have to have those officers running.
No, that money's slated for strictly, uh, maintenance and upkeep.
Is only maintenance and upkeep?
Correct, yeah.
And we spend about twenty-two thousand, you know, that?
Whatever the loans I gave you. And we have a meeting next week.
We're not doing the question and answer.
Well, that's okay if, if you could provide.
I could provide that because I'm on my head committee and I, I would come forward.
I do, I do have that.
The only, the only thing I would sympathize what Bobby said would be as far as somebody else being fiscally responsible for the police under that kind of circumstance would negate any sort of safety or that umbrella of protection from the city, being a city employee would be kind of gray area because you're having somebody else pay them for services when they're employed by the city, so they're not independent contractors, so you would run.
But the school pays for the police officers. But the school pays for the police officer at the school.
That, but that's a diff, that's a completely different contract. He's basically like, he's under the umbrella where he is associated with the PD, but we get reimbursed from the school for that, so.
So why couldn't we get reimbursed from this? I mean, we pay like bands to play out of that fund. That's not upkeep.
You don't pay bands?
No.
You don't pay the bands to play from that?
No. That fund is the Middle East Tribute Committee's fund. It's been set up since day one. All donations.
Well, like, we feel like that, like, crisis to do like the?
No, we didn't pay it.
Didn't they pay for that?
Okay.
Then we've been, uh, Kathy.
Yeah.
Kathy's fund.
So, so we didn't pay the Kathy's fund either? Like, we gave no money to Kathy's fund?
No, I personally paid for Kathy's bands, personally.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Well, no, that, that's, that, that was not elucidated at the meeting.
It shouldn't be.
No, but it wasn't, but it wasn't.
So, I mean, Kathy runs her own thing, so.
Okay, and then, um, I do wanna let everybody know, since I've been kinda hounding or beating, beating this guy to force or whatever, um, about the, um, tax exemption. I did look through the purchase agreement. It does not state anywhere in there that I saw, I mean, preface with I, that I saw, um, who would be responsible for filing that tax, tax exempt status. Um, so it looks like it would fall on the city in some capacity, but I don't know where. Um, and then, did we get the taxes on status filed?
We are waiting for the Mersales, or, yeah, the Mersales Fire Department to respond with their certified letter. Uh, until I receive that certified letter, I can't file the exemption. I've received her, I've received the one from Ottawa, I've received the one from Mersales Grade School and IBCC, so until I receive the fourth one, it is prepared and ready to file, but I'll need that from, uh, what, uh, Mersales Fire Department. I, I anticipated since transit degree card is, um, but until I receive, I can't file it to complete it.
Okay, and then, when are those taxes due?
I believe July 9th is the first installment.
So if we don't get it done within the next seven days?
Well, it's not going to be done, it's a petition, um, so.
So we're gonna have to make that payment and then hope that they reimburse us?
Well, that will be up to the council.
Yeah, well, a, a, and, and all due respect, it does seem that there were multiple governments involved in not only the TEP but in the sale, whether it be the, um, Marcelo, uh, Mersales Elementary School District, the Ottawa High School District, the Mersales Fire Protection District, Manly's Township, I believe, I don't know. But it, it, it does seem that there were a lot of other governments involved that were not consulted and were not invited to the deliberations of the purchase.
Well, and that's kind of the issue with the taxes on status is because in order to get reimbursed, they have authority to it, which means that each of those entities are moving money.
Quite a bit.
And that money comes from the rest of us, just so everybody's aware. Um, and then, um, sorry, I already handled that and that. Um, I think that that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Nobody else will get on with the other representatives. Number one, under Commissioner Kaminsky.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that the accounts payable for the last half of June in the month of Florida, $47,253.50 to be approved, and a warranty drawn on the city treasury for the several months.
Do you have a second? Any discussion?
So, Marcelo Shidmoto was $9,500, uh, for an air conditioner. Uh, Zion Bank, which is our bond payment for wastewater plant, $344, $431.25. Blue Frost Blue Shield, $39,849.14. Law service, $5700. Hopkins and Associates, this is our annual, uh, auditors, uh, they've been doing it for us for nine years, I think. Uh, $10,900, they do all our internal audits, and then only public risk fund, uh, working as common, $6500.
Are, are we getting, you know, like, the last meeting, we discussed the $108,000 bathroom, and that is more than my house costs. Are we getting multiple bids for these things?
Do you have to explain?
Please.
We have a contract at the park. You go out and get bids, when you already have a contract, now you're gonna have two contractors in there working against one another. So the proper way to handle it, we've done for years and years and years, is ask them for a change order. The council twice then has to look at that change order and say, no, or yes. And, and I think it was three to two, we could go, go ahead, yes.
No, no, I, I, I understand, just, in, in point of fact, the answer is no.
And the other thing is, is with the, uh, surface down there, same thing, another change order, $51,000, but that's how you do it when you have a contract on it. If you try and stick somebody else in the middle, it's gonna be.
Sure, no, and, and voted yes on the, on the, on the, on the accessibility swing, but as $108,000, I voted no, and I don't believe that, I think we probably could have done our due diligence and gotten more than one, one bid on it.
The bathroom itself delivered is $90,000.
Okay.
When I looked back, believe the Christ one or Canute, or the, uh, Warner Wall down there in 2019, a much smaller one was almost $50,000. The prices have gone way up.
No, I under, I understand, I'm just, in point of fact, we have not gotten more than one bid for that. Understand, take it.
Okay, hard to read the rule?
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small? I think Denise had a quick comment, so if I have her into it, please.
Thank you. Um, I guess my issue with that is, like, that's why I'm trying to deploy that amendment, um, from earlier, is if it's over a certain amount, because pretty much like after you complete the swing, that part is done from what I understand, so the contractors wouldn't be doing this. Um, and the other thing is why you could build one instead of having a prefabricated one brought here for a lot cheaper, because I looked at those costs.
Twenty years ago, that one across the street cost almost $100,000. They're not cheap.
I don't doubt that, but it can be built for less than you're getting a prefab one.
Are you sure?
Yep.
You got some pressure?
I can get him for you, yep.
May I, may I also add though, when you're a contractor and you know that you're gonna go work for the Catholic Church, a city, uh, St. Jeff Bezos, that contractor is going to jack that price up three or four times more than they would for us residential. Also, we have to build some, I'm not, I'm not for $108,000 bathroom. So we do all have to look at things in a different light. If we need it to last, right, if we want it to have longevity, it has to be built in a better structure.
But it's not, it's a prefab.
I, I don't know how it's be, I know, but, but we don't know how the prefab is gonna go.
But isn't that the argument for getting more than one bid? Which you agree?
Well, I agree, well, I've been in corporate for 15 years. Um, if you wanna go buy pens for your corporate office, you have to have three bids to buy a pen, okay, and you buy the cheapest one, so yes, I agree with three bids.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Shy?
No.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that the payroll for the last half of June in the month of $98,764.21 be approved, and a warranty drawn on the city treasury for the several months.
Do you have a second?
Second that.
Any discussion?
No worries.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Epstein.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that appropriation orders for fiscal year 2025, 2026 be placed on file.
Do you have a second? Any discussion?
So appropriation is every one of our line items, we, uh, we, uh, put together additional costs in case those lines do go over, so in case we do have an issue, uh, with the water treatment plan or a pump goes bad, we gotta spend a couple hundred thousand, a few hundred thousand, a million dollars, and we get the funding for it, we have the line item to spend the money. So the port, uh, appropriation orders is, is a way that we've had our budget going forward. It doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, but that's in case we go over our budget, if we could actually spend more.
Hard to read the rule?
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
No.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
One more thing, Mayor, uh, I just wanna thank Ed Campbell and, uh, the Fund Days Committee for dreaded net hot weather in the fire department, everybody, it was, it was a really hot week to do Fund Days, uh, we had a little bit of a fireworks show on Saturday.
Guys, in that, after all.
Yeah, which was a hectic runaround, but, uh, it's really hard, I had great, great volunteers, uh, I just hope we continue to have more volunteers, uh, thank you.
Ed, thank you so much.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
That's what I was gonna start off with as well, was thanking the Fund Days Committee, all the volunteers, and, um, everybody who worked, um, all week to really try to do something really wonderful for our community. I know, um, the majority of our community appreciates all the hard work that is into that, it is a barely, there, it is a very fruitless, um, job, but our volunteers are all amazing, and I appreciate every one of them. Um, just segueing into that, July 4th is coming up, we'd like to please remind people, um, fireworks are not legal. State Illinois says that, that it's not Mersales trying to kill the fun. I apologize, I know fireworks are amazing, but trying to keep everybody safe, um, it's been very dry weather, um, that increases the chances of fires, um, and it's also just courtesy for our community members, animals, and any of our, um, community, community members that might suffer from PTSD. It's a very broad time of year for a lot of those, um, community members, so we're just asking people to please be mindful, um, and be safe on July 4th, and, um, we also have the firefighters car show coming up here, so everybody keep an eye out for that, it's an amazing event year after year, and, um, just come out and support our, um, amazing car show and our amazing fire department, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Mr. Shy, if anything else?
Well, we have the, uh, the, the six inch matter with Lincoln, so as long as the MFT gives us, uh, one of the state gives us a waiver on that, we're moving forward as, as planned, uh, with Lincoln and the others. Um, uh, really, I, looking forward to, uh, getting some, uh, streets done with this, uh, this, th- this summer. Um, I do have number two is the format of the meeting discussion. You know, um, I had asked that the, with all due respect, the minutes be read at the beginning of the meeting, and my purpose for that was to remind us of what we had discussed at the last meeting. It was not harassment, Mr. Mayor, it was not at all negative, it was, hey, let's remind ourselves what we discussed previously so that we're held accountable for what's happening now. Well, in absence of that, which the other members of the council have said that's not important to them, I do think that it would be wiser to get citizen participation at the end such that we're held accountable to what we discussed during the meeting. It is not meant to be offensive or angry in any way, it is simply meant to say, we said we would do this, what did we do? And now the citizens have an ant, have the ability to, to respond to what we did or did not do during the meeting. So anyway, just wanna put that out there, um, really, it's, it's, it's meant in good faith, but I really think that what's important is we do something, we decide something, we deliberate on something, let's, uh, let's be accountable to what we said and what we said we would do. Uh, no, no negative, uh, intentions whatsoever. Please, Denise.
I actually, it's funny that you said that, because before we started, I told Mr. Buckingham and Mrs. Small, um, that it's actually ordinance 30.20A1 that public comment is at the end of the meeting, and, um, Melissa told me that she believes that may have been changed.
I'd have to go back and, but if not, it certainly can be corrected.
But it's not reflected in the ordinance if it was changed.
Well, and, and if it was there, it's kind of proof that it's not meant in any kind of negative or inflammatory intention, like, that's what was done, um, why would there be an offensive implication in that? Uh, no, no differently than the reading of the minutes, like, that is under Robert's rules of order, why is that an issue?
I don't think, at least my personal opinion is that you suggesting that's not offensive, um, I will just flat out tell you, my vote for that will be no, just on the simple basis is that I feel the community members have a right to discuss with us prior to us making votes on decisions, so we can hear them out, because there's been a lot of times where I've had community members come in and speak on a topic, and they've offered a different stance that I might not have initially had, where it could change how people are choosing to proceed with their votes, and I think it would be a disservice to them if we just go on, make these decisions, and they go, well, you don't really get a voice in giving us your point of view in these decisions that we've already just made, but you can tell me afterwards, you know, everything about it, so, again, I'm not saying I, I don't feel you have any malice with your suggestion, I'm just saying for me, I feel it's a disservice to our community, taking that opportunity for them to speak prior to us moving forward with any decisions that we make that affect them and leaving their opinions off the table.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Small, by, by that reasoning, should not the minutes be read such that the residents are reminded of what's been discussed at previous meetings?
I, the minutes are there for people to read, so.
They're attached to the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, two days before the meeting, and pretty much inaccessible, how many of you had the minutes before you and were aware of them before the meeting? So, yeah, three.
There's different avenues.
When I walked in.
There's different avenues, I, I would just say, I'm not, I'm not here to debate that reasoning, I'm just here to, because I'm here to discuss this topic, I'm not here to debate things, Mike, I'm here to discuss the topic at hand, and that topic at hand was us discussing your, your plan or your idea for us changing the format, not anything else, so that's what I'm gonna be speaking about, is my opinion about the format change.
No, and, you know, and, and completely duly noted, um, I just want to say that my intention for asking that it be at the end is that we be held accountable, and I believe that the actions of the city council, the majority of the city council are such that transparency and accountability are not, are specifically not.
I respect your stance 100%.
What, what we're doing, and thank you for that. But yeah, but yeah, no duly noted, and like, yeah, no. I hear, I hear that, and you're yours. The.
Thank you, Commissioner Small.
Make the format for the council meeting was changed at the request of leave the council. And my view is having public comment beforehand, if somebody wants to come and say something to the council, they can say it and leave, they don't have to stay for the whole drama show.
Uh, you know, point of order, like, you have slandered me by name and by implication in official, city-funded, resource. No, sir, sir, you have, you have slandered me by name and by implication in city-funded avenues. Why are you now saying that someone should be forgiven that responsibility, that time, when that's how you've acted in contravention to the very policy that you introduced and the two other people, um, said yes to?
They might not wanna stay to the whole show, that has nothing to do.
It, it, it's fine to slander me, I get it, it's fine to slander me as the city of Mersales, but not as an individual, and.
Buckingham, now.
No, go ahead.
Well, like I said, I, I said it before, guys, I've done it for 22 years, this year, the first time we change it, beginning of the meeting. I'm not willing to change it back, I'm not gonna keep flip flopping, it's gonna be one way or the other, but for 22 years, public comment was always at the end of the meeting. Now, it's the beginning of the meeting, that's fine, leave it there, I'm not gonna keep flip flopping, I can't do it, you know, I mean.
Okay, do you have anything in regards to your department?
Yeah, I wanna give, uh, I've got three guys, just the water license, Jeff, does it, Jeff Latilla, Jason Belton, Ryan Owens, always see the water license, a pretty problem. Water license, we've got more guys right now with water license than we ever had in the city of Mersales, a pretty damn problem. I think we all should be.
That is a great accomplishment.
Yeah, and like, uh, Ed, I wanna give you guys credit, like I told you, I, I can't come out and talk to you, I just can't do it. Start tomorrow, vacation day tomorrow, I'll be at my house all weekend, anybody wants, anybody wants to call me, that's fine, I'm not going outside, I just, I don't take the evening, you know, you know, and like I said, I mean, I just, these council meetings, like I said, aren't like they used to be, there's so much negativity going on in this city, it's unreal. It's ongoing. I'm not saying certain people aren't right, certain people are wrong. What I mean, for the amount of fire requests that have been cut out is a taxpayer's expense. You gotta realize that. It's costing me and you and the taxpayers here, not the people who live out of town, the taxpayers. It's costing us money. I'm not happy about it.
I've been blamed for them.
I'm not pointing my finger at anybody, like, I'm just.
Sir, I have been blamed for those expenses when I was not responsible for those expenses. Blamed on city funded, uh, measures for those expenses.
I'm not pointing my finger at.
Yeah, the city of Marcell's did, sir.
Let's move on.
The city of Marcell's blamed me for those expenses and I was not to be blamed.
The website, it's always friends.
The only last question I got, I've got a lot of people asking, I don't know the answer. So I'm gonna ask tonight. Year ago at this time, these meetings were being taped back here in that corner where Larry Coe is sitting back there. Why, I mean, I don't, why all of a sudden did the meeting stop being taped?
I need advice, legal counsel.
Okay, right, okay, I totally, I don't. I never did find an answer.
That seems improper to me. Why should it not be, why should it not be a public record?
We're not required to do it.
That was the legal advice that was provided, that they were not required. It's up to each council to decide what governance they want to.
We, we, we did not elucidate that at, at open or closed meeting. Did we? Like, was the deliberation as to whether to keep them recorded or not done at open or closed meeting? Uh, sir, sir, were, what was a decision from the council, done at open or closed meeting to keep recording the council meetings or wasn't it?
I take the advice.
The answer is no, and thank you for that.
I take the advice of legal counsel, one like you.
Well, no, no, sir, the Open Meetings Act is such that the, that the, that, that, that decisions of the, of the council should be done at open or closed meeting.
I got one last.
Full stop.
I just wanna make it clear. I mean, I might be wrong, but I don't think I am. I worked for that Collin Valley Center for twenty-four years down here, from start to finish. There were two agreements down there. One in two thousand and three, okay? The other one was in two thousand and twelve. What you're talking about earlier, man. What you're talking about there, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I may be wrong, the lease agreement between MTCO, Free to Run, the city of Marcell's. MTCO went belly up and had the link down. Early belly center went belly out, belly out. The new company, not to a big one. If I'm not mistaken, that made that contract you're looking at in all and wide.
It doesn't because it was mentioned in the purchase agreement when we bought the building.
Mentioned the purchase agreement?
It is, sorry about that, too. Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
Anything else, Buckingham? Okay. Uh, under me, number one.
Move by Mayor Hall, that's a resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, a resolution appointing your director and co-directors of those to be adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
The director is gonna be, uh, Jeff.
Liedelaw.
Liedelaw.
Co-directors are gonna be, uh, the Jason.
Justin Krizdowski and Ed.
Ed Campbell.
Yes.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Hardcore Reed Roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Shy.
Aye.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
Number two.
Move by Mayor Holliday, the resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution expanding the scope of legal services provided by KGG LLC.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Everybody received a copy of the resolution. The FOIA information is going to be, starts to be unhandled by KGG because the Cantland law firm doesn't have enough staff to keep up with it.
Well, now, now, in point of fact, I have been blamed for the FOIA expenses for a document I did not release and a document that had evidence has been provided to us that I did not release. So let's start there. Beyond that, beyond that, um, I don't know that we've gotten multiple bids. Um, does this law firm provide the cheapest and best service to the city of Marcell's?
I'm gonna take a bullet on it.
Okay, go ahead and do that, but I have to say.
The council put that together, they're already working for us.
They're supposed to be, they're, they're specialized.
I, I would provide some explanation so that you can appropriately vote on it. So they are currently, uh, legal counsel for the city. They've already been approved as legal counsel for the city. They handle the zoning and planning and any other miscellaneous matters. Um, you know, we work in partnership with them. And so given the large volume of Freedom of Information Act requests, one firm can't handle all of the city work plus all the Freedom of Information Act work. So it was our recommendation that they, uh, we, you know, utilize a law firm that you already have an engagement agreement with. You've already approved their services and their fees and that you're just expanding the scope of their, uh, legal services.
Understanding, uh, understood. By the preponderance of evidence, both circumstantial and direct, do you believe that the under color of state, the statement made that I was responsible for the FOIA cost was legitimate?
There's a lot of words.
Sure, I don't, I don't, no, no, I don't, I, I, I understand, but understanding under color of state, the statement is that made that I am responsible for the condition of personnel and the condition of the FOIA requests and both are illegitimate based on stuff that we knowingly have been provided to us. And it's very, Canton, with all due respect, I believe I've been greatly mistreated by both, by, by the city of Marcell's.
People draw their own conclusions.
Well, no, no, and, and, and we'll get there. And, and, and we'll get there.
Here's what I would tell you, Commissioner Shy, and, uh, and would defer to the finance commissioner. When you're preparing a budget and when you're preparing, you know, legal services, they're categorized generally for, you know, I can't fit every FOIA request into a particular category. We've had fifteen categories and that would not make sense to try and, uh, do that level of minutia. I don't know when you refer to that you're being held accountable for the FOIA requests. I don't know what that number is. I don't know what particular FOIA request it is. I don't know, um, you know, if there was a budget for a line item for FOIA. So when you say that you were responsible for a Freedom of Information Act request and it comes out of your budget, all of these commissioners sitting here have probably been allocated a Freedom of Information Act request.
Yeah, no, and so what, was there a logical nexus between um, expenses for FOIA coming out of my budget that was inappropriate?
I'm not sure I can answer that as we sit here because I don't know what Freedom of Information, so it all of the line item comes out of legal, is that correct, Commissioner Kaminsky? So any Freedom of Information Act request.
Comes out of legal when you charge.
Right, and so it's not taken from any particular commissioner's.
But, but there was an assumption that my department was responsible, even though I did not release the document, I did not have access to the document. The council knew I did not have access to the document and it, and, and proof was provided to the, to the council that I did not, that the document was released elsewhere. So just wanna get that out there. I am, I am sitting here under grave concern about how the city is acting.
How much, Bobby, would you say roughly we spent on FOIA costs? From taxpayer to taxpayer, I don't.
What is the cost of one FOIA?
It depends, sir, on the amount of time that the Freedom of Information Act requests and the depth of those requests. For example, we just received a Freedom of Information Act request uh, that encompassed, encompasses over ten thousand pages of documents. So you can imagine if I have to go through each one of those Freedom of Information Act requests to determine if those documents should be released to the requister because simply because you request a document under the Freedom of Information Act request does not mean automatically that the city has to provide that document. There are certain exemptions that apply to the Freedom of Information Act request from municipalities and those exemptions can be taken by the city or the city can say, even though that exemption is available to us, we're not going to exercise it. Okay, we're gonna provide the document.
Based on what? You're not gonna provide certain information based on what?
If there's a, an exemption that applies, for example, one of the exemptions that applies is attorney-client privilege. So if there's a document in those ten thousand pages that is considered an attorney-client privileged communication, the Freedom of Information Act requister is not automatically entitled, entitled to receive that document.
Who decides that it's restricted?
The exemption is held by the city. Legal counsel will advise.
As city, I waive it.
I'm sorry?
Who is the city in this conversation?
Well, no, I, I know, with all due respect, you, you, you waived, Mr. Mayor, you waived attorney-client privilege when you shared the internal dialogue with your personal attorney. And so I am now saying that I waive it as well.
Well, Mr. Mr. Shy, let me at least answer this now, this question, so that we're all educated as we sit here in this room because, um, because the city is incurring a significant cost. I don't have the final number.
He just got one point something million on a boom dawg.
Two point eight, two point eight.
He's bitching about two dollars for FOIA.
Well, um, the Freedom of Information Act request, sir, so to my, to finish where I was at, so you understand that there are certain exemptions. One of those is attorney-client privilege. So if the city, which is the council, the mayor and the commissioners provide, if the legal counsel will review those requests and say that these exemptions apply. It's not legal counsel's decision. We don't make decisions as legal counsel. We advise. We make recommendations. We suggest best practices. But it's up to the council and the mayor and the commissioners that you've elected to make a decision if they want to exercise that exemption or not.
And, and point of order, should that not have been done at, at closed or open session?
It can be done at open session. There's no problem.
So, but was it done at either?
What, what was?
As in, was the decision to release the information or not to done at open or closed session?
For what information? I, I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, no, my, 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 my point is, as far as I'm concerned, release the information. You're saying that the council has not ruled and should not that have happened at open or closed session or else you don't have direction from the council?
Well, that, that's not, that is not a black and white question. I, I think what you're asking for is a black and white answer. On ten thousand pages of documents, I will give a ju, you know, I'm not going, if you were gonna go in a closed session to, to discuss every single page of, and, of those documents, you'd be here for a really long time.
I understand, a closed session did not exist.
We will follow, we will follow legal counsel's recommendation.
But the Open Meetings Act would have the, the, the will of the council be ascertained through open or closed session, which did not, in point of fact, happen.
Correct, because we're gonna follow the legal counsel.
And I object to that. I wholeheartedly object to that. That should have happened at open or closed session and it did not happen.
Christine, uh, for clarification, um, on that matter, you're just saying that for each individual person that might be receiving that FOIA request, if I were to email you and say, hey, does this fall under those exemptions? Not collectively as a council is what I'm thinking. Maybe there's some sort of disconnect with Commissioner Shy's spot on, um, maybe how this was handled. So I know like if I'd asked you or Keith or Mike and how that, how that, how I should proceed personally, I'm not asking on behalf of the council, I'm asking for myself. So that would not fall under those parameters, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, so, so in point of facts, has the council's will been ascertained in absence in open or closed session?
On the, on the flip of the.
Sir, I'm sorry, Attorney Cantlin, please.
While you're talking about.
No, 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 like very clearly, you're saying that you follow council direction. I'm saying we've had an open or closed session, even though I've asked for one. That has not happened. So how has the will of the council been ascertained in absence of an open or closed session?
So council will send out an email to the mayor and the commissioners if we believe that there is an issue that needs to be discussed because on, 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 on a general basis, the Freedom of Information Act requests are handled by the Freedom of Information Act officer. And so that the Freedom of Information Act officer will then, if she needs direction, will ask corporation counsel in reference, not, not all the time do we get asked.
That strikes me as a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The will of the council was ascertained, not for open or closed meeting.
But your opinion.
No, no, a hundred percent it is, but I want, I, I wanna state it openly.
Hardcore Reed Roll.
And by, and by the way, I am being sued for my opinion given to a, such an email thread that I do not believe was. So go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Small, aye.
No!
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Bobby, never give me an answer.
No, no, he's not going to.
I don't have it to say the amount. I'm not, I'm not gonna say what the dollar amount is here as open council.
We'll, we'll get them, but we'll, we'll publish them on the web too.
I don't have a dollar.
Seventy-seven thousand copies have went through the machine in there, so we're gonna burn it out and need a new one pretty soon.
I'll get you a scanner. We haven't used it. It's three hundred bucks a dollar.
You have anything?
I'm here.
City attorney, you got anything?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move by Commissioner Small, the city council now adjourned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Hardcore Reed Roll.
Sorry. It's a long day. Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Shy.
Aye.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
Lucky didn't wanna see that.
Yeah.
We pick a boat for that over expensive bathrooms. No, the city should, not the council, the people of Marcell's that are paying for it.
More public participation will be appreciated.
Yeah, uh, why don't everybody just donate a little something, you know, couple two-by-fours, meals, time, concrete. I'm thought of to build it. Hey, Melissa, I'm Jeff.
Nice to meet you.
Finally.
Take a look in the back of your car there. I made these today.
Nice. Love it.